Well, everybody and welcome to this HCT podcast. As always, I'm your host Lance Gormley. Our guest on the program today is Newton City Commissioner and former mayor, three time mayor Leroy Kane. How are you doing today Leroy?
I'm doing great. Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you for coming on the program. Uh, we're getting ready to do a series. You're the first person, so you're in the hot seat. You've, you've got a lot of weight on your shoulders right now. You better do it right and best because everybody's going to follow you up. So, uh, just, uh, we're doing a series where we're interviewing people in the community that are running for the city commission, the school board. We might even touch on some other places in Harvey County, but this really is just an opportunity to once again get to know who is running for office, why they're running for office. If they've been elected before, have the ability to speak on that, uh, maybe challenges or things that they feel are successes. And when I called Leroy, he was more than willing to come out and sit down on the program and, and I, and I, and I do appreciate that. I'll just say that. So thank you Leroy, once again.
You're welcome.
Okay. Uh, Leroy has been out here on the program before. If you go back and you dig far enough into the archives, you'll be able to find that, uh, interview. And what it really focused on was where he hailed from, what, what did he do when he was growing up, the, the whole thing. And, and so you can really just get a bio on his life as far as that goes. But for the purposes of this interview, I just want to get right into it Leroy. Okay. Oftentimes people that run for election, even myself included, you, you have what, you have a, an idea about what it's going to be, right? And what, what the, even the process of running for election is going to be like, and you find out that, man, that's not necessarily what I thought it was going to be, right? As far as the running for election process, uh, you're, you're even in the position, you're under a lot of scrutiny, a lot of times. There's people that, um, may agree with what you've done, maybe not, whatever the case may be, but, uh, and I don't want to call it a thankless job, but oftentimes you're just always under the public eye, public pressure. So you'd been doing this for a while. Why are you doing it again Leroy?
You know, I love our community. We, uh, we are in a period now where it's a once in a generational transformation and growth. And so when I, this is will be my fourth time now running for city commission. So I've been here 12 years. I started back in 2013. When I ran originally, you know, I was asked by a number of city leaders, they came into my office on a Friday, I think it was a Friday. And the filing deadline was the following Tuesday at noon, and I had no interest whatsoever in running for any office. That just was not in my purview. Anyways, I decided to do it and, uh, the first two or three years were really rough. You know, there was, there was some dissension among the city commissioners. There was disrespect going on. It was not fun. And so I just hung in there though, because I knew, I mean, I could see it's kind of like, uh, you dig around. Yeah. You know, you're in the horse stall and the, and the little boy digs around, digs around, there's a horse in here somewhere. And so I was digging around going, I know this is going to change and, uh, and sure enough it has. And so when I, when I got elected for, after the third term, I told myself, this is it, you know, 12 years is going to be enough. However, what has happened is that in the last two or three years, we have turned the corner and we are in a growth process. We're in a growth stage now in Newton. And the thing is we've been stagnant for 30 years. And it just puts more and more burden on the residential homeowners and our taxes have been going up, evaluations have been going up. But now what's happening and it's like, there's costs that are, that are upfront before the full, uh, development happens. And, and they come back on the tax roll. But what's happening is, you know, we want to expand the tax base. And the biggest way, the most effective way is with business, not with homeowners. Because businesses taxed at a 25% tax rate and the homeowner is only 11%. So the more businesses we get to expand or come into the community, the, the less burden it's going to put on the homeowner. And that doesn't happen immediately, but it happens at some point, we're going to feel that relief. So it's fun now. That's why I'm running again. And I want to see, uh, I want to see a lot of these developments through to the end. And I want to experience some of this, uh, the, the rewards of all the effort that, that, uh, me and them, and my fellow commissioners have put in.
Okay. And I get a question. You know, you, you had mentioned how, um, I, I think of all the people that I plan on, um, interviewing. You probably have the longest running stint as, uh, uh, an elected official. So when, when you, you had mentioned that in the beginning, when you got there, uh, this is just, you know, not, this is, there's a lot of tension. This is, uh, this commission is not necessarily working in unison with one another. Um, two, two part question, do you think some of that had to do with just where the city was at that point in time with not being able to see a future? And so just mitigating, uh, all these scenarios and situations that didn't seem as though they were going to be profitable in the near future. Uh, and then also the second part of the question, why didn't you just, you know, you, you said you had faith that it would change. But when you got in there, why, why didn't you just say, you know what? If this is how this is going to be, no thanks.
Well, you know, the old saying, if you want change, you have to be the change. And so there's a little bit of that mentality. And, and part of me, part of how I'm built is I am a very determined individual and I don't give up because there's always a way. There's a, either a way around it, under it, over it. There is a way to get to an end that is a win-win for everyone. So that's why I didn't give up. But I'll tell you, in the beginning, there was a high level of distrust for government in general. And so there were one or two, uh, fellow commissioners who took it upon themselves. It was a one issue, kind of a reason why they ran. And it was because, you know, there were things going on at city hall that was just, it was illegal. It was, it was underhanded. It was not good for the community, right? And by golly, we're going to change that. And so anyways, as, as time went on, I knew there was a way through that. Uh, it wasn't fun in the beginning, but now we have some people on our commission and, and I'm going to, I'm just going to say that, you know, I really, I really appreciate and I enjoy working with Rod and I, and, and all of them. But I mean, Rod and I have really put some effort into, because we're both business guys and we're both connected in various ways, in different ways to developers, to builders, to people who, who make things happen and build things. And so that's, it, that's been a lot of fun. And, you know, we, we, we meet fairly frequently with people, with developers, with business owners who want to do this, that, or the next thing. And so at this point, it is, what has happened is, you know, we've reached critical mass. And so now it's, it's generating its own momentum and we are being noticed on a wide regional area kind of a basis. And so we're getting phone calls. I mean, it's, it's interesting, the amount of, of phone calls I get from various developers and business owners, because they notice what's going on. And so they ask various questions of how we can make this happen or that happen. And it's, it's fun. And, and not only that, we have, we have a city staff now that I think is just outstanding. And, and we have been very intentional of putting all the pieces into place. And so that there is a level of trust, putting a culture in of, of business friendly, development friendly. And of course we have to have guidelines in there. You know, there's always kind of a constant push, but that's just the way it is. That's, it is that way in any city. And, uh, and, and one thing that I, I also appreciate is that we just now approved our up to date building codes, uh, building codes that are real similar to what Wichita is. Cause a lot of the builders from Wichita come down here and build things. And so they want similar building codes. And so that's what we have done. And that's, that's a very positive thing.
Well, and I would think it would make it difficult if you were somebody that's a contractor and you've got one set of rules here. And then, you know, you're, you're used to abide and by those, and then you come here, which is just a stone's throw down the road. And it's like, what is, what is going on here? Okay. Okay. So just generalized questions. Uh, so just see where you're at and what you're thinking. Um, let's talk past. Uh, in the past, what do you think was one of the biggest challenges, uh, in, in the beginning? And you kind of alluded to some of those things, but, uh, more specifically to, once you got past, or once it appeared that the commission had started to work as a more cohesive unit. Uh, so I'm going to say your second term, right? So just to put a snapshot in there, by the time you had come to your second term, I'm kind of hearing you say that the, the corner had turned on the commission itself. That, that maybe the commission started to operate in a more cohesive unit, that there was a little bit of trust that began to be built between the commission, the community, the staff. Uh, staff started to see that happen. Uh, you know, it takes time, it takes a lot of time for those relationships to be built in a positive way. But what, in the past, what do you think was one of the biggest challenges that Newton was facing?
Oh, I think it's, you know, our, our, our tax burden has slowly risen and our water rates, that, that topic always comes up. You know, we went seven or eight years there without raising the rates at all. And then all of a sudden we had a boom, we had a big rate. And it really upset a lot of people, understandably, because we probably should have gone up just little incremental, uh, bites each year, and we didn't do that. So we've, we've heard that for years now. And then we had to, uh, you know, we had to rebuild our, uh, wastewater treatment plant at the cost of $19 million or something like that. And so we had to, you know, insert the cost of paying for that over 20 years. But I'll, I'll even go back to the first term when I really didn't, you know, in the, in your first term, you're just sort of shaking your head going, man, what's, how's everything put together? What, what affects what? And all those kinds of things. Well, we, we made a bad decision when we, uh, we were pushed into fast tracking building, the old ABI building out at the airport. And so there's a $6 million building that did not materialize. It never materialized from the beginning. And we were, we were on the city was on the hook for that. So it, that, that was really hard. That was hard to explain to the people why we said, yeah, we'll go along with it and, uh, and not knowing, we didn't do our due diligence. And I, you know, I'm, I'm responsible too. I should have done more research and due diligence on the people involved, but I didn't. So anyways, we're, we're, we're through that period, but I think, yeah, as, as things slowly started to turn. And one of the things, you know, a couple of the things that happened was the pool upgrade, the swimming pool upgrade and the Centennial Park baseball diamond upgrades. Added a, a baseball diamond, put some restrooms out there, upgraded the concession stands. Uh, that, that was sort of the beginning of turning the tide of, you know, more amenities for, for our citizens.
So do you, do you feel like my, leading into my next question, uh, some successes, right? So in the past, um, speaking to, you know, what, what, I'm going to ask the same questions, just to give you a heads up of, of right, you know, right now, a snapshot at this point in time. But i- in the past, just, just, uh, I want to give you the floor to talk about during your time as a commissioner. Just lay it out there. What are, what are some of the successes to date that you really want to hang your hat on and be able to promote? Um, as far as how our community has evolved, right? And, you know, I know it's not a one man show, right? But I, I really want for you to be able to just express your heart, like when you think about why I do this. Yeah. These are some negatives that you mentioned, but at the same time, these are some real positive successes that have taken place. There's the flow Leroy, lay it out there.
Okay. One of my sayings that I really love is teamwork makes the dream work. That means that we all have to work together as a community. And, you know, in the past, there's been some real back and forth and headbutting between the different entities, whether it's a city, the county, the school system. And, uh, and so what has happened just in the last few years here, we have started to come together and work together and be aware that we want to promote each other. We want to promote the county. We want the county to promote us. We want to definitely increase the quality of our education here in USD 373. That's as important as anything else. Cause if, if, if new families want to move to this community, you know, they don't want to go on. And I know this is, people don't like doing this, but they do it. They go on Zillow or they go on other, uh, platforms that grade our community on our education system. And fair or not fair, that's what it is. And so we have to get behind improving that quality. And I think we've done that. And, and, you know, we have three or four different organizations where we have people from all of these entities that meet monthly, or even sometimes more frequent than that. And we talk about how can we work together as these three entities? And I think that's one thing that we're, we're going to continue to experience much greater success as we do that. So that, that really is some of the, one, one of the things I think it's really important that we all have to work together here.
Yeah. So as, so as, uh, so not to rephrase what I'm saying, but I, I, and, and I'll say this, um, you know, you mentioned the ball diamond, you mentioned the pool upgrade. Uh, what are some other things that people, if, if they're listening to this right now and they're saying, where are the successes? What are some other things that, that the city has been able to accomplish that you can put your finger to and say, well, you know, a, a new library? Uh, that's another one, uh, that I can think of right off the top of my head. Um, oh man, I mean, there's just, there's.
Well, here's, I'll, I'll just name you a few. So the, the, the library is one of them. So obviously everybody can see that Hillsborough Industries expanded just east of Prairie View. Prairie View is going to add some housing of their own. Ember Hope, uh, over on, uh, E, uh, West Broadway, they're going to, uh, add up to 140 housing units. We have probably 250 to 350 new housing units, either, either already done or on the drawing board or in progress. From Fox, Fox Ridge, from, um, out at the golf course, from there's, there's duplexes over on Southeast 14th. Uh, we have obviously here are the ones, the new GAF that's coming in out here on, uh, on Hillside. That's a huge deal because that's not only going to be GAF and that footprint, it's a huge footprint. And everybody, if you go out and, and drive by there, you can see a first class operation. That is a construction site that is, that is bar none. That is first class, the way that is laid out and the way they are, are, are doing that. But then they're going to have feeder companies that are come in and that, that feed raw materials to GAF. And they're going to be loaded, located out there too. So we don't even know, we don't even see the final product, but that's going to be a big deal. And obviously we have a new QuickTrip. Who knew QuickTrip, you know, think about it seven, eight years ago, that there'd ever be a QuickTrip in Newton. That's the top of the, top of the line convenience store.
Always hopping. And I know when I go in there, there's tags from, if you look at the tags of people that, I mean, you're talking different states, different counties. I mean, uh, why stop in a QuickTrip, QuickTrip in a, in, in, not saying anything about QuickTrips other places, but Newton is, you know, you get through the area. We're, we're right here on highway 50 and, and I-135. And this is becoming a place that people want to stop for that.
Exactly. Exactly. So we have a full vision. They did a full expansion out there. We have a new QuickTrip. We have a new McDonald's out south of, uh, Arby's there. We have a millennial machine. They've expanded several times here in the last number of years. We have a new people's bank and trust just south of Arby's. We have, um, oh, 320 South Main, that old South Dylan's that has been there for many, many years. Finally, we let the bid to a contractor to demolish that building and to get it development ready. And so what the goal is, one of my goals and several of us on the commission is to bring a developer in and perhaps have a public, private partnership. Who knows? But to bring a developer in and to develop that 320 South Main, along with, as everybody knows, the old, um, depot is for sale. And maybe there can be a deal made there where those two together can become a destination kind of a development in downtown. Whether it's venues, restaurants, who knows, uh, museums. So that's something that's going on. And of course we've got the new Mennonite housing there on West First. We have, um, yeah, the, I think together, all the different entities working together. And then we also know that we have a school bond, uh, issue coming up here. And look, I know that school bond says, okay, and, and it might raise the mill levy, what? Four or five mills? And everybody's already complaining, your, your taxes are going too high. I get that. But if you look at the big picture and want to increase the quality of our education, that's a big piece of that. That's what new families that move, are moving in, that's what they look to. Cause if we want to compete with the Andovers, the Godders, the Valley Centers, those are the, just the things that we have to do.
Yeah. Well, everything that you just mentioned, as far as successes, I must say, uh, is under the umbrella of economic development, right? Uh, we hear a lot about economic development, economic development. And I think that, that, that word, uh, although people understand the definition of it, what that means, that over time, it's not something that just happens. It's slow. And right now I, I would agree that we are, uh, moving a lot faster. That momentum is, is, is definitely in our favor. But, um, just to explain to people as far as economic development is concerned, these are not things that just happened overnight Leroy.
There is much preparation. I mean, these things, a lot of these things are years in the making and the planning and, and getting all of the, uh, the elements together that you need. There's a couple of other things that, uh, that are coming down the pike. One is we have a bike path that's going to connect from the Sand Creek bike path all the way out to the Sands Creek Golf Station. So that means we're going to have to go under the railroad tracks and over to the, uh, the golf course. That's going to be a really neat addition to our bike path. And, uh, and I think that's, that's really, uh, something that, that all of us can, can look forward to. And, and the community is going to enjoy that. So, yeah, it, it just takes a lot of time. In fact, and then we also have, uh, a hotel incentive package now, because we are really underserved with our hotel, local hotels and existing hotels. We, we hear all the time, like from, uh, golf, the, the golf tournaments out at Sand Creek, where the majority of those people have to go to Wichita for hotels. There just isn't availability here. The quality isn't good enough. And the hotels we do have, all the rooms are rented up from, from, uh, a corporate, uh, companies that, you know, they, they'll rent 10, 15, 20 rooms at a time, six months or a year at a time. So, so we, we really need another hotel or two here, which in fact, we just met with a developer here in the last several weeks. That is, and, and we're trying to put some things in place to make that happen.
See, and that's, you, you say the hotels thing. I have family that comes in from Kansas City and they always have to stay somewhere else because there's, and that, and it wasn't always that way, but it is that way now. In fact, years ago, they would be able to come here and find a hotel room. And then now it's like, I mean, there's not even no point in trying. Uh, so when, when we're talking about, um, successes and, and, and economic development and how all, all this stuff has, has progressed over time. I mean, you listed a tremendous amount, just one, I mean, you came in here prepared Leroy. I'll say that, always prepared, always prepared. Cause, uh, cause beforehand, just for the audience to know, I didn't give Leroy a list of questions that I was going to ask. I just said, hey, um, I'm going in this direction. And, uh, he, I, he was already prepared for the, the situation in advance. So I gotta tip my hat to you for that, or, uh, in, in what you've prepared and, and how you've just come with your A game Leroy. Okay. So, uh, like going into the, the future, right? So, so these were things that were in the past, we're focusing on today. And I just want to ask the same similar questions again. Uh, two things, what do you think is the greatest challenge for Newton, the Newton community, um, moving forward from today?
Well, I think one of the greatest challenges is, is our tax burden, our property tax burden on our citizens. And you know, it's the chicken and the egg thing. Cause see, we have to put so much infrastructure in place for some of these new companies. For example, we're putting a new, uh, hillside, a new, you know, we're paving hillside from First Street South, uh, to get to GAF. Okay. And then this is KDOT, but they're rebuilding the bridge over there on Southeast 36 to accommodate all of the semis coming out of GAF. Cause they're going to have, you know, 50, 60, 70 semis coming out of there every day with all the shingles that they're going to be moving around to different parts of the country. So it's, so anyways, we have to pay for some of the, of these things upfront, and that just puts more burden on our taxpayers. But there's going to come a point though, when some of these businesses and companies that, even though they may get a tax abatement for 10 years, but at some point that's going to go off. And there are, those taxes are going to come online. That's when the relief is going to happen. But meanwhile, there are citizens who are feeling the pinch and I get that. And I guess I would just say, please be patient. I know all of us have to budget. I have to budget. I pay the same taxes as everybody else. I don't necessarily like it. But I see the, I see the big picture. I see long-term where this community is growing. And there's, there's other companies. It'd be nice if we could just say all the details of all the companies that are considering and, and are already planning on coming here, but I can't do that. But I see that in the future, this is going to improve and there's going to be a lot more amenities that we enjoy here in Newton, Kansas.
Yeah. Yeah. And not to go back, but just, um, I, I guess I want to ask you this, uh, and it just came to mind and, and, um, uh, and would lead me into the next question that I have. But, but I think a lot of people, you hear a lot of people talk about the bond, you know, this upcoming school bond or whatnot. Um, I've always believed that schools are a part of economic development, right? Because of, I'm a parent and I'm in a situation where I'm looking at, if I'm going to move somewhere, what's, what's one of the first things that I, I look at if I have kids? The school system, right? If there's housing and then there's, uh, you know, a job or I'm within, you know, so many miles of my, my occupation. And then from there it's, well, what kind of schools do they have for my kids? How important do you feel, uh, a, a robust school system is for economic development?
I think it's at the top of the list. I think it's as important as any of these other things that we've been talking about. Because again, families do not want to move to a community where the school system's grading is low. They just don't. Cause we all want our kids to be educated in the best education system possible. So I think that is, that is job one, that we get behind this, this bond issue and that we, because think about this. The, the $50 million that they, they landed on, that doesn't give us all kinds of fancy whistles and bells. A lot of that, a good majority of it is just infrastructure on the buildings that just to catch up to current, to make them nice. They're not going to be fancy. They're not going to be the big brand new school. That's not what that's going to buy. We're just trying to catch up. And so I always kind of get amused when people talk about, oh, the new high school out there? Well, the new high school is what? 40 years old. So, uh, we have to maintain these facilities and this is just job one. It is at the top of the list of economic development.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay. Uh, so moving forward, once again, uh, what do you, and I was going to ask, uh, what successes do you see in the future? But I'm just going to be more broad and, and say, uh, because you, you know, you, you've come with a pro positive mentality and mindset. Uh, I've known you personally and you're very pro positive. I mean, I mean, I never see you in a way in which you're not looking at a situation in the best light. Like when you came in here today, I said, how are you doing Leroy? And you said, it is a beautiful, pristine, wonderful, gorgeous morning. And I thought, you know, I like Leroy because Leroy is always positive, but just in, in, in knowing that about you, um, what does the future of Newton look like in your eyes Leroy?
Man, we have so many possibilities. The future looks, I can't wait until some of these, uh, companies finish their construction, all the streets and all the, the, the roads that, that we are redoing. I cannot wait till all of those are finished and we're down the road a year or two and everything's, well, not only that, in the process, other companies are going to constantly continue to want to come here and to expand and to grow. And, uh, out there just south of Arby's, south of People State Bank, all of that at some point here shortly. And you can, whatever shortly means to people, but it's going to fill up. There's 80 acres there that's going to fill up with development. So, you know, the, the landscape is going to look different for Newton. But I would also have, I want to say this, we have such a jewel in Newton Medical Center and all of the different clinics that are out there, the YMCA. I'm telling you what, that YMCA is, we are so blessed to have that in our community. And, you know, for people who think that the YMCA is just for people with money, it's not. It, it gives away millions. I'm on the advisory board out there and it gives away millions of dollars every year in scholarships, based on your income level to be part of and participate in all of their programs. It's a one, I call that my, my second home, because I work out there regularly, but I love the environment.
Yeah.
And, uh, and so that, the, the Newton Medical Center and our airport is a real jewel. You know, we have, we have like, what? 600 or 700 employees at the hot, the Newton Medical Center campus, uh, five or 600 employees out at the airport. So a lot of people don't even know that. And other, other companies are looking to come and, and expand at the airport too. So it's, I just get a big warm smile in my heart. And that's why I'm running again. Even though I told myself in the middle of my third term, I'm not going to do this, or at the beginning of my third, that, that's, that's it. It's not it. This is, this is too much fun, that we're growing, where the quality of our community is improving right in front of our eyes. And I know there's naysayers. There's people who, you know, want to throw mud at any, anything that's going on. That's okay. But they're not leading the way. The people and the entities that are leading the way, we're winning.
And I just got to say, I add to that, the thing that came to my mind was culture, community. The thing that came to my mind was culture, community culture. And I, I would say that over the last eight, eight years, I think, I think it's been about eight years. Um, it was a very negative community culture. There was a lot of people that would go out and they would have something negative to say, especially on social media platforms about whatever decision was being made or, or our losses. And then they were just, it would, it would be like dogpiling on that. And it would just be one right after the next. And I've seen a culture shift, a community culture shift, where I believe many people are looking at our community and seeing the type of successes that you're talking about. It may not be the most vocal about it, right? There might not be the first one to go out and, and just try to get a, a positive thread started. But when something happens and somebody says something, there might be people that start on this negative, um, path. But then there's just as many people that are, you know, engaging and saying, no, no, this is, this is positive, this is good. This is, uh, the direction we need to be going. So, um, we want to keep these rather short, uh, Leroy. So, uh, I just want to be able to, to say we could sit here all day. I know we could and talk about so many more things. Uh, but I want to be able to just pass it over to you, to give you the last word. Uh, you know, uh, I, I, and just speak directly to everybody that's listening. What do you got to say, Leroy?
Yeah. So I love this community. I do. And the more I'm here, I just have a, I have a real passion for getting behind and making it the kind of, of a community that families want to bring their children and raise their families here. I raised my, my three, my wife and I raised our three children here. And, uh, it, it's, it's a community that I'm proud of. And so I want to continue that legacy, because it takes all of us. Not any one person can do this. And it takes all of us together. And so I want to get behind and I want to support all the various entities we have here in Newton, the city, the county, the school system, uh, all of the other people and the players that are part of this. I want to, I want to get behind and I want to be a cheerleader. And, uh, so anyways, together we can do this and we are doing it. And so I am very, very happy to be here. I'm glad, I appreciate you inviting me. And I think we have a very, very bright future here in Newton, Kansas.
So make sure that you get out and vote for Leroy Kane when it comes time to vote, right?
Thank you.
So, uh, okay. Well, I just want to tell everybody, thank you for listening to this HCD podcast. As always, I was your host Lance Cormley and our guest on the program was four-time hopefully commissioner and three-time mayor, maybe four-time mayor Leroy Kane. Uh, appreciate everything that you're doing Leroy and, and how you're, uh, staying the course and, and serving, uh, through, through hard times and through good times.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Have a good one, everybody.